I had called the major of Bloomington. I was telling him I was going to be there.
Call to order a special meeting for the Normal Local Liquor Commission. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Fritzen?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Ms. Gaines is not here.
The purpose of the special meeting is to consider a liquor license application for C Y Heritage Inn of Bloomington, C Y Heritage Inn of Bloomington Opco, there's the name for you, LLC, doing business as a Bloomington Normal Courtyard, 310 A Greenbrier Drive in Normal. This is a change of management for that property and so they already have a license there. This is just switching that to the new ownership.
Approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Class E liquor license is approved for C Y Heritage Inn. That concludes our business on liquor. A motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mrs. Reese?
Aye.
Commissioner Kuss?
Aye. The Liquor Commission meeting is adjourned. Call to order a public hearing pertaining to the proposed amendment number three to the Community Development Block Grant, five-year consolidated plan. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Fritzen?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Gaines is not here.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak concerning the public, concerning the proposed amendment to the Community Development Block Grant five-year consolidated plan? Is there anyone here wishing to speak pertaining to the proposed amendment to the Community Development Block Grant five-year consolidated plan? And third and final time, is there anyone here wishing to speak pertaining to the proposed amendment number three to the Community Development Block Grant five-year consolidated plan? We have no speakers. Motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Call to order a regular meeting for the Normal Town Council for December 15th, 2014. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Fritzen?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Gaines is not here.
Before we begin the meeting, we've had a request to speak to items on the agenda tonight. Cameron Mosher, I think, if you're here, if you'd come forward. Take any one of those you'd like. Just a little background, we do limit comments to about three minutes and I'll need your name and address for the record.
Cameron, why don't you pull that microphone down towards you? Yeah, thanks.
And then lean into it.
Yep.
It's not on.
Wendy, you want? Wendy, I'll turn that on.
He's telling me it's on.
Okay, go ahead.
Even closer maybe?
You're fine.
Okay. My name is Cameron Mosher. My address is 910 Perry Lane, Normal, Illinois. I just thought that, you know, everyone's here just to kind of represent what the people want. I would think that that would be one of the main purposes of the council. And speaking of wants, I don't want an overpass in Normal. I've never heard anyone say, you know, gee, what I think I could really use is an overpass in Uptown Normal. And I haven't lived here very long, but when I moved to central Illinois, I really liked that it felt different than where I lived before. I live in the Chicagoland area. We had high taxes. Lately, what I see in Bloomington and Normal, I think, is a concerted effort to make it like a big city. I liked seeing a nice break in my taxes. I thought, you know, cost of living was cheaper moving down here, but now I fear with capital improvement projects like this that I'll just be right back where I started. Many of the items on the list for the improvements and beautification aren't one-time costs to construct, but they're going to require years and years of maintenance and policing. And the overpass alone is estimated to cost six and a half million dollars, I'm sure as you know. I feel like it's too expensive, they're not necessities, and I don't feel that these projects truly benefit the people of Normal. That's it.
Thank you. First item of business is our...
You did just pledge.
Oh. That's right, we didn't do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first item of business is the omnibus agenda. These are items that are considered routine and will be handled with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. And I would like to be excused on voting on any bills that may have incurred my duties as mayor. Mrs. Reese?
I'd like to be excused from voting on any bills that I've submitted in the course of my duties or any bills submitted by Advocate Bromin. I'd like to pull item C.
Mr. Preston?
I'd like to pull item I, please.
No approval.
Second.
Items we're considering in the omnibus vote are approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 1st, 2014, and approval of town of Normal expenditures for payment as of December 10th, 2014, a motion extending participation in a diabetes disease management program for one year, authorizing the execution of a district office lease with the US House of Representatives by its agent, US Representative Rodney Davis, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with the Rock Restaurant LLC for rear porch reconstruction at 201 and 203 North Main Street, amending chapters 11, 11.1, 1.2, 1.3, and 1.4 of the municipal code to adopt administrative adjudication, amending section 11.1 of the municipal code of the town of Normal and adopting the Illinois Plumbing Code, and amending section 11.3 of the municipal code of the town of Normal adopting the 2014 National Electric Code. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The omnibus agenda is approved. Item C is a motion to waive formal bidding process and approve the purchase of 2015 ambulance from Alexis Fire Equipment of a cost of $190,000.
I move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Mrs. Reese?
I pulled this because I was trying to remember how many fire, I mean, sorry, how many ambulances we are really running these days and how that number is looking for the
Absolutely. We run three ambulances 24 hours a day with a fourth in reserve, so whenever there's maintenance or, you know, we do a ISU football game or a high school game or we have something going on in the Uptown, you know, Sugar Creek Arts Festival or something like that, we'll put that fourth unit into service then.
So do we keep one at each of the fire stations?
Yes, there's a first-line ambulance at every fire station and then the reserve unit is at the headquarters station just for storage, basically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So, another one to replace what's going on is good.
It is. Actually, all of the ambulances that have been replaced, except for this one that we're currently going to replace, is now with the new pickup truck front end. I don't know if you've noticed or not, but the newer ones have a pickup truck front end versus the van that was cut off and put on the box type thing. And that's a different motor and a more heavy-duty chassis and everything, and so our hope is that they will stand up to the wear and tear better than what the vans did because it's a heavier-duty Ford F-450-style chassis.
Usual lifespan of one?
Well, we try to run them frontline. They're total six years, four years frontline and then two in reserve. But with the vans, we did have to replace them a little bit earlier than what we had anticipated, just because they didn't hold up.
Good, good. Well, thank you for what you do with that and the community is well-served.
Absolutely.
It's been a while since you started doing all that work for the community, but it's gone very well. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mrs. Reese?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The motion is approved. Item I is an ordinance amending section 11.3 of the municipal code of the town of Normal, and that is adopting the 2014 National Electric Code. Mr. Preston?
Second.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. One of the primary changes to the National Electric Code here, it looks like from three years ago, is arc fault circuit protection that's expanded to include kitchens and laundry rooms. Wondering, Mr. Trimmel, if you could explain exactly what that means?
What arc fault is, actually? Real basic one-on-one electrical stuff. Arc fault basically is where wires heat to a point where they cause a fire hazard, okay? And then ground fault protection is also where it's more of a shock hazard. So depending on the scenario, if you're standing near a sink and you have a ground fault, the ground fault protectors we're all used to seeing around our kitchens, those will trip very prematurely to try and minimize electrocution. Arc fault is a little bit newer technology that's come out in the last 10 or 15 years, like GFI's that worked its way into starting in the bedrooms, then it was expanded into the family rooms, now it's moving into other areas of the house. And probably in time, you'll see it in most locations throughout the home, so. But it's basically a device that helps prevent fire hazards as opposed to shock hazards. Thanks.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mrs. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The changes to the ordinance are approved. One item of general orders tonight, and that's a motion to approve the fiscal year 2015/2020 Community Investment Plan. Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson, I think you had some overview comments on this plan?
Yeah, just a couple of introductory comments. This is obviously a report that you recognize. We've compiled the CIP, which we call it, for over several years now. This is a five-year plan, but it also reflects what we're doing in the current year, so it really spans a total of six years. The document before you today reflects a capital project broken down into four different areas: transportation, parks and open space, public facilities, and utilities. Those are the four primary areas where all of the capital or community investment projects are categorized. The plan identifies a little over $60 million in projects that will be funded in accordance with the plan over the next, this year and the next five years. Once this document is adopted by the council, it will be incorporated into the budget, which you will see preliminarily on January 15th. We have a budget work session in this room. But this is kind of the first step of the budget approval process where we focus on major construction projects. I will also point out that we've identified a little over $100 million of capital needs that are not funded in this document. Now, most of those needs are not things that are urgent. They're things that they've been identified as needs, things that we'd like to do, will need to do someday, but there are simply not dollars available to undertake some of those projects right now. However, certainly, it's a policy matter. The council has every right to adjust priorities. If there's projects that are on the not-funded list and you feel they should be funded, feel free to raise those. Staff will try to work and trade out other projects that may be considered a little where we have some flexibility to fund those projects that are currently not funded and you'd like to see them funded. The only caveat with that is we're using a variety of different sources for these projects. You have capital, just general capital funds, which basically money comes out of the general fund, that's flexible, but then you have motor fuel taxes that have limitations on what sorts of projects they can fund, parkland development fees, parkland dedication fees, again, some limitations, and then our utility funds. Water and sewer have limitations over the types of projects can be funded, so we have to kind of fit these projects into a puzzle, so to speak, and find the right funding sources for the type of project. But we have several members of the staff that were involved in putting this together, primarily those that are dealing with outside maintenance and capital projects. You've got Gene Brown, city engineer, Wayne Aldridge, Public Works, Steve Gertis from Water, and Gary Little from Parks and Rec primarily involved in putting this together, but certainly Andrew, the finance department, was involved as well. So those folks are prepared to respond to any specific questions you may have on a project-by-project basis. And again, once this plan is adopted, whether it's as recommended or as modified, that will be included in the FY 2015/2020 budget, which you will see in January for the first time. So with that, we'd be happy to respond to questions.
Questions on Mr. Fritzen?
Kind of a general question is to process among the staff and department heads and the critical, important, flexible nomenclature that's used here. That, I would presume, is kind of based upon the condition of a street or a sidewalk or a facility that needs repair and improvement, and so you can't keep putting those off forever, you have to do it. But is the, do you look at a, kind of preliminarily as you go into it, do you look at, we're probably going to have this pool of money that we can spend on community improvements and we may have more critical needs than we have money to fund, but if we maybe don't address a particular critical need that put us over the top, there are a couple of important or flexible needs that could fill in. Is that, I'm just kind of curious as to how the process works.
That's exactly right. The critical projects are those that, from an infrastructure perspective, as you said, are in such bad condition that they really need to be addressed, or in some cases where we have a legal obligation to undertake, whether it's ADA or some other agreement where we, you know, we basically are under obligation to get the project done. That's exactly right. ADA is a good example. There are some times that you may have a project that is deemed critical, but because of its cost, there's no fit for it, so we'll move two other projects that may be a little less critical in to replace those dollars. That's probably not typical, but it can happen. We do try to address the critical needs, and these are relatively subjective. We don't have a hard and fast evaluation criteria to determine whether it's critical or whether it's important, but we basically, as a group, discuss them and kind of make decisions on which ones should be listed as critical and which ones are important. So, and again, this is updated year to year, so a lot of the projects, you'll carry over from year to year. So it's not like we're starting from scratch every year. But of course, every year, there's projects that are completed, they fall off the plan, and then new projects are brought in, whether they're ones that have already been identified in last year's plan as important projects that were not funded, or in some cases, there are new things that come up that we weren't aware of in prior years. So it is a dynamic process, but it certainly, the first plan was pretty complex to put together. It's a little easier year to year just to update what we've done in the past because we don't have to sort of reinvent the wheel every year. But we do look at pricing every year, we do update the cost figures, and so those do change, and our funding sources change every year. I will say, over the past several years, we've ran, we've ranged in the 60 to 75 million-dollar range. That seems to be generally based upon available funding, about what we can afford, you know, year in and year out. And there are always a fairly large, long list of expensive wish list items that are needs, but things that we just can't afford. I think there's, I counted like 25 or 26 million dollars in three projects: a community center, let's see, a park maintenance building, which is certainly a need, and...
Soccer.
Pardon me?
Soccer.
Soccer, thank you. You got it.
That's a...
Those are big-ticket items that clearly are needs, but we just haven't identified funding sources for those at this time.
I think it's important to, as I skim through the list, the vast majority of things are infrastructure, repairs, maintenance, and upkeep and the like, and I do appreciate Ms. Mosher coming out tonight because I rarely, if ever, have we had, you know, a citizen come out and make a comment on the plan, at least at this stage, and so, but there are some situations like the overpass, the pedestrian overpass, where the only Commerce Commission has something to say about what we do or don't do and how we do it, and the functionality of the train station is, would be compromised if we don't address it in some manner. And so some things, and the vast majority of those funds are funds that are going to come from outside our budget, even though the numbers in our budget, it's money that comes in and then we expend it. It's not a blue-sky list, and I can, you know, since I've been around as long as I have, there was a time in the 80s where the five-year budget, out in those outer years in particular, there were some blue-sky things where funding wasn't identified, and we made a decision back then to eliminate that kind of budgeting, you know, long-term budgeting, because it really wasn't budgeting. It was just, "That'd be nice to do this, and we'll put it out there in the fourth or fifth year, and if we're able to identify a funding source at some point." Well, now, if it's, even if it's in the fifth year, you're working on figuring out how that would be funded if we actually were to take that project on. So it's, and then, I don't know how many years now we've been doing it as a community investment plan as opposed to the capital improvements aspect of the final budget, but obviously that was a great move, and it's been several years now, and it just gives us, all of us, gives you, the staff, gives us as a council, a better tool to use to look year to year where we've been, what we've done, been able to do, what we've put off and maybe can't keep putting off, and also gives us some time other than a, you know, one point in time when the entire budget gets considered. So, because these are things, like you said, that just, these didn't come up in the past 12 months. They've been around, most of them, some of them, and they kind of move in and out from the level. So just some comments really about the process and the tool that we have and really how beneficial it is for us.
Mrs. Reese, and then Mr. Scott?
Yeah, I do appreciate that the soccer complex is on this list. I think I continue to hear from various corners of this community that the clock is ticking on the facility that we have, and the potential for that to bring a lot of people into our community and bring a lot of revenue to us seems fairly obvious, but coming up with the $10 million that's put in here is the first trick. And I think, I guess it's important to say this to anybody that's listening or going to be reading, it's here, we're recognizing that it is important. We have to figure out how to make that work. It will be a community resource, just as it is now, and so putting on our community hat, looking at a broader picture of what is our role and what can others do to participate in this is, I think, one of the challenges ahead if we're not going to come up with the $10 million out of our budget. So I'll be interested in the support of being a longtime soccer player that I am.
Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to note that this is a pretty comprehensive plan. As Mr. Peterson says, there's 127 capital projects on this list, and for those people that are watching or in the audience tonight, this list is, it's all available at normal.org, and you can drill into each individual project and find out the specific details of the project. I think that's wonderful to be able to share that kind of information. I use it regularly. I looked at, for instance, the street resurfacing always seems to be one of those projects that gets a fair amount of discussion at this table, and as I look at the total dollars spent this year, we've inched up just a little bit, and we do that each year. And these projects are not new, as has already been stated, some of these projects we've seen in years earlier. But I think it's important to note, we look at things such as the paved, concrete pavement analysis that Mr. Brown conducted just recently and presented to us, I think, so that we can adjust how we're going to be utilizing those resources, those scarce resources that we have. But each one of those line items is available and can easily be read online. I think it's really, really important to note that, and if people have specific questions about a project, we'll be glad to answer those questions for you. Normal.org.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Scott. That's an excellent point, and I failed to mention it. As you said, it's online, you can click on any project and it'll pull up a separate screen. Some of them even include photographs of what we're replacing or maps showing the location of the improvement, as well as all of the different funding sources, because we may have one lump sum figure in here, but there could be several different sources that provide funding, so that's a great point. Thank you for making it.
Further on the CIP?
Just one other comment. I think we all ought to feel good, there's a lot of projects on here.
Right.
And during this day and age, everybody has tight budgets, we have tight budgets. I feel good about all of the things we're able to do. A lot of it is taking care of what we already have, improving, repairing, maintaining. There are some new things on here as well, but most of these fall into the category of maintaining our infrastructure, and I feel really good about this list. Again, there's a few things we'd love to push up to the funded list, but all in all, it really is a pretty impressive array of projects that touch all areas of the community, all geographic areas, and, you know, addresses the hard infrastructure needs like transportation and utilities, but also provides, I think, a fair amount of funding for parks and open space, which I think is equally important.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Gaines?
I was just going to say that as I was looking through it, I was excited to see all the gray, because gray on here says that it's either underway or it is done. And so there are an awfully lot of projects that have gotten done just in the recent time, and that's exciting to see that this list really works.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mrs. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The motion is approved. We have two items of new business, the first of which is a presentation to this body by Mr. Andrew Johnson, the general manager of Correct Transit.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. It's hard to believe it's been another year gone by already, but it has been a good year for Connect Transit. Our efforts and investments in community outreach and technology is paying off with ridership increasing 25% in fiscal year 2014 and 40% over the last three years. Put that in perspective, when I started here in 2011, the transit system had just finished its fiscal year and reported a little over 1.8 million trips. Now, fast forward to fiscal year 2014, we provided almost 2.6 million trips, and we're closing in on 3 million trips for 2015. We're also moving towards being able to better provide amenities to our customers with the completion of a bus stop and shelter study. We had a consultant that came out and took a look at the entire community and provided recommendations for where we can put stops and shelters. We're now going to be conducting community outreach as we finalize our plans to move from a flag stop system to a more accessible fixed stop system with bus stop signs, poles, and other amenities like that. We will be holding open houses in January to show what the new bus stops will look like and where they will be located. Connect is also leading a multi-state joint procurement for new buses. We will be receiving up to 30 new buses over a five-year period as part of a 360-bus purchase. Now, don't worry, we're not going to be on the hook for the other 330, but it shows that the nationwide leadership role that Connect Transit has taken in our industry, that we are being trusted and relied upon to lead a procurement for 28 agencies in seven different states. And our payoff for doing all this heavy lifting is better pricing and faster delivery than what would have been achieved if we had just gone out on our own. Now, paying for those buses is also going to be a lot easier since Connect... Now, paying for those buses is also going to be a lot easier since Connect was awarded an ultra-competitive Federal Transit Administration Ladders of Opportunity Grant for over $2 million. There were actually billions of dollars of requests nationwide for this $100 million program and Connect Transit was able to secure over 2% of the total amount available. Now, with those buses, we're hoping that you have seen our buses moving around town with advertising on them. I know that's something we've been talking about for a long time. We are now selling the ads and we're selling them not only on the sides and the rears of the buses, but we also fully wrapped our first bus. It's very, very bright and red and yellow and moving all over town. It's a great way for advertisers to get their message out there. It's also providing some much-needed local revenue to the transit system. Now, in addition to the community outreach that we've been doing, we've also been successful in reaching out to our elected officials. We have taken bus rides over the past year with most of our local and state officials. And also, we, we managed to have a visit from a member of Congress this year. We will continue to conduct that political outreach and also, you know, continue to tell our story of just how important to this community public transportation is. Now, as we move into the next year, there are many more exciting projects coming up. I discussed the bus stop and shelter program. We completed the study, we're doing the outreach. Next spring, we're actually going to start installing. We have funds that we were able to move from a different federal grant and put that in place, so we'll have a, a jump start. And that, that definitely is a result of the good relationship that we have with the Federal Transit Administration. Typically, they don't let you do that, but we were able to let them do that because it's a very worthy project. We're going to start putting those, those stops and shelters up as soon as possible. We're also going to be seeking out private partners for certain shelters and, and stops as well. And we have had numerous organizations in the community express interest in partnering up on that. And our first will likely be at the Walmart just up the street from our office. We should also start receiving those new buses I talked about in late, late summer. Those are going to be used to replace and also expand our fleet, because hopefully we're going to have the need for more buses, because we'll have some more frequency and more service. One of the other things that we are committed to doing is building new transfer points in Normal and Bloomington. We've had a great start here in Uptown Station. We desperately need a transfer point infrastructure at our other three locations in downtown Bloomington, Eastland Mall, and the shops at College Hills. We are looking for funding to accomplish that goal, finding all, all available, available sources. And we will push that through and I'm sure make that happen in the next few years. Another exciting thing that we're doing is conducting a comprehensive operational analysis, analysis of the transit system. We were able to secure funding from the State of Illinois to pay for this. We're going to have a consultant come in. We have received proposals for that. And what that consultant will do is review what the transit system is doing well. It will also let us know what we can do better. And it will help us create a roadmap that will help us achieve better service, including efficient, more efficient and effective routing, more frequency, greater span of service hours, and even seven-day-a-week service. But making that roadmap a reality will require more innovative funding. Connect Transit is definitely grateful for the generous local capital funding received from the town. It has enabled us to make great strides in improving the quality of transit in our community. But it is no secret that Connect Transit operates in a very uncertain operating funding environment. It's been years since the federal government has passed a long-term surface transportation bill. Recent discussions that I have had in Washington with congressional staffers has certainly not inspired confidence that that's going to change anytime soon. Also, the State of Illinois continues to have financial difficulties as the, and, and the uncertainty associated with an imminent administration change further complicates the issue. The State of Illinois has decent cash flow, has been paying, paying us on a regular basis and, and very timely, but you never know when that's going to have to change. Now, the federal government and the State of Illinois, that makes up 85% of our local funding, or of our operating funding, I should say. The rest of it comes out of the fare box and other, other amounts that we can raise through advertising and, and other agreements. Local funding really is going to be the key to the future success of public transportation in our community. And I think our ridership growth has shown that, that there is a demand for more public transportation. And the public input that we have received definitely reinforces it. We're working diligently to find all available sources of locally-generated, non-tax revenue to better leverage the public operating funds that we receive. And we will continue discussions with community leaders to determine the realistic pathways to growth in public transportation in Bloomington-Normal. Thank you very much for your time and I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Johnson? Mrs. Reese?
I, I'm aware that my church has some interest and I've directed them to call you. Interest in maybe partnering on a shelter. They kind of see that as a, as a way to assist the neighborhood, to make a friendly place, even if it's not inside the church, but outside where people are waiting for the bus, that's already a bus stop. I didn't know if others had thought of that, or I said, "Talk with them, see if there's a partnership you can come up with, or maybe some requirements that we would need to meet if the church was going to actually build it or maintain it." So, any thoughts on that?
Right. We're, we're definitely excited about local organizations and businesses that want to partner up with us. There are many ways that, that we can do partnerships. Some of it can, can simply be, they pay a portion of it, which becomes our local share towards the federal grant. There's other situations where we can put something in place for them and they will maintain it, because that, that is a definite concern we have. Putting shelters throughout the community is great. We have to somehow keep them clean, looking nice and, and in good shape. So there's a number of different ways. There is no set model for us to do a public-private partnership on shelters, so we're, we're looking to be as innovative as we can.
Well, that would be great. And I think maybe if this message gets out to others, maybe they'll think of that as a, as a chance to serve people in a brand-new way.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It definitely promotes a, a better look for everywhere in that neighborhood when you have that, that nice piece of infrastructure there.
Mr. Fritzen?
Often when we are looking at local tax rates or even sometimes salary comparisons among, you know, department heads and the like, we compare ourselves with other communities like communities in central Illinois. Curious on the, on the fare box side of things, how Connect Transit compares to other transit systems, you know, in comparable-type communities?
In the general area, we are in line, more or less, but that's in line with places like Champaign-Urbana, which is heavily subsidized. In more of a peer-review nationwide-type situation, we are low and we're taking a look at that. And certainly, there, there is the possibility of making changes there. I personally don't think we get enough out of the fare box at this point and we need to make some changes there. But at the same time, we have to be sensitive to certain regulations that we have on the civil rights side and that type of thing. So it does take study. I would expect that as part of our comprehensive operational analysis, we'll be looking at fares as well.
You know, it's a smallest piece of the pie there on the revenue side and I realize that it's, it's like some of our services, some of which have been in the news recently, locally, where you just have to subsidize. You know, you can't, you can't charge enough to cover the whole cost and that, I mean, that would be impossible. It would defeat the purpose of having the public transit, obviously. So, but, but that's always one that, since it is a small percentage of, of the total revenue picture, it doesn't get talked about a lot. And that's why, you know, obviously I wasn't aware, I had to have no idea how it compared to other communities like ours, so appreciate that.
But there's, there's definitely opportunities there. The fare box is one piece of it, but also, when you look at the, the trends in the nation in terms of the amenities that, that workers want and the types of companies that we're trying to attract to our, our community, transit is a big part of that, that sell, if you will. And you have to work on the pricing schedule to, to keep it competitive, but at the same time, just the cash that goes into the fare box is not the full picture. And there are, there are definitely deals to be made with, with the, the business community. And we're starting to do that as well with pilot projects with local organizations. We just unveiled a, a employee pass program with country companies. So that's, that's gaining traction and, and we're working to sell that to other companies as well.
Any more questions?
Just a comment. Uh, two, two things. First of all, I did want to mention that Andy mentioned that the transfer facility redevelopment. I think their top priority at this point is the facility in downtown Bloomington, right in front of the Law and Justice Center, Longfront Street, which clearly, yep, Cheryl knows that one, which clearly is in need of redevelopment. That's a very busy transfer spot and not the most convenient, certainly. And Connect Transit with Andy's leadership submitted a proposal to be considered, this to be considered one of the One Voice projects. And it was selected by the committee to be one of the projects that One Voice will carry to Washington in March and advocate for funding. I think it's, not only is it a really good project, makes sense, but it's, it's one where there are funding sources for it. And I think that kind of community support will, will certainly help. And so, we hope we can get that done. I also, I just want to mention clearly, as, as much as Connect has done and, and they've, it's phenomenal the last few years, what they've accomplished. They've rebranded the system. I think ridership is exploding, just lots of things. But we continue to hear that, that it's not enough. We want, you know, we want broader geographic service in the community. We want more convenience. We, we've started a, a kind of a program here at the Town of Normal where we're working with Connect to encourage employees to use transit. I've taken the bus two days, only two, but it's two. And, but if I miss at my stop, if I'm not there on time, I got to wait an hour. And that's better than nothing. At least I'm convenient, I, I can walk about a block and hit my bus stop, but if I miss it, I got to wait an hour. And there are a lot of people, you know, unfortunately, convenience is critical. And convenience, so if you want to have a bus every half hour, every 15 minutes, that takes money. If we want to expand to Sunday service, or we all heard from the students that we met with a few months ago, they, they, they like later night service, because they may be working out in the shops at College Hills or somewhere and they take the bus to work, but they, there's no bus on the way home. So those are the things that I think, I know the, the Transit Board, of which I'm an ex-officio member, they talk a lot about the need for local funding. And the good news is if we can expand local funding, that means we can attract more state and federal funding. So I know that's something that is a real high priority of the, of the, of the board. Mr. McCurdy's here, he's on the board. They talk a lot about expansion of funding, but it is ultimately going to take a local commitment to get that started. And I'm sure that's a conversation that we'll all have in the, in the future. But the, the demand is there. People want the service and, you know, this is a great, I mean, the performance that we're seeing now is great, but it could be far better if we could invest some local dollars in the, in the system.
Mrs. Reese?
I, I forgot to mention one of the more interesting services you have, and that's the Double D software that we can put on our phone to find out when the bus is coming. So if people are wondering, are they tech savvy a little bit, they can download that program. I don't remember that it costs anything.
Nope, it's free.
It's free.
And you can go to our website and find your way to it. Also, our rider guides have a QR code that will get you to it. It's the, the Double Map app and it will let you know exactly where your bus is in real time and let you know when you need to be out there. So Mr. Peterson has no excuse for missing his bus.[1496.74][1496.74](Laughter).
He's got it. He's just got to be there.
I just got to get up in time.
Got to walk faster.
If I oversleep, I'm in trouble.
The other, other thing that I was, I was going to mention was, I had a, a chance a couple of weeks ago to ride an all-electric bus. And so while we're talking about our electric community, beginning to think about electric buses in the future is, is very interesting. Very quiet, no smell, they just travel easily. The one I was on, it needed to recharge as it finished its route, but it was a very quick charge and then it was off again. But very, very nice.
Which community was that?
It was at Austin, Texas.
An emerging technology. It's a very expensive technology right now, but they're, they're
It'll change.
Advancing it exponentially and it will soon be within our reach.
Yes, exactly. And considering where
Since it's so flat here, it works out nicely.
Considering we're, we're fairly comfortable with the electric world, I think it's reasonable that we would want to see that happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
We have a motion to appoint to the Children's Discovery Museum Foundation Board.
Move, approval.
Thank you. As this is an item of personnel, there will be no discussion unless a council member would like to take this to executive session. And seeing no such request, please call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mrs. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Mrs. Reese, would you read the appointment?
I would. By this action, we have just appointed Ms. Kimberly Cummings. She is coming to us with a lot of great experience. She, she has worked in supporting youth in other communities. She's an advocate for all children, but particularly those that are underserved, underprivileged, or at risk. She was born in Cleveland, but she's been active in her college hometown of Wilberforce, Ohio, and also in Phoenix, Arizona. So she brings to us experiences in other communities. She's been a mentor to underprivileged high school students and created a mentoring program. And she's worked on the women's build of Bloomington, so she's been here long enough to roller press sleeves in that kind of work as well. So we're pleased to see her come on board. She will join our group of exceptional leaders.
Thank you. Before adjournment, are there concerns or comments?
After he's done, I've got to cut that.
Preston?
Just one, Mayor. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend both of the community sessions for our Parks and Rec master plan. And just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Gary Little and his team in Parks and Rec and to everybody who participated in those. A lot of good discussion, had a, had a wide range of ideas and I was glad to see folks in the community out and glad to see Gary and his team facilitating something like that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
On that point, I, I did send out, I think this afternoon, to the council a summary of those, both of those community meetings that Mr. Preston attended, so you can all see the comments that were received. And I know Gary was very pleased with the participation. Two announcements, this will be our last meeting before the Christmas holiday and the New Year's. The next meeting's January 5th, so happy holidays to everyone. But just to alert you, our holiday schedule, we, the, the, most city offices, not all of them, will be closed on the, half a day on the 24th, the afternoon, and then both the Thursday of Christmas and Friday, the 25th and 26th, and then of course, on New Year's Day, we will be closed. So I also want to mention, in fact, somebody called me late this afternoon and asked that I mention this, our Illinois State University Redbird football team had a very good weekend and they are now in the final four of their, the FCS National Championship quest. And I've been asked to announce that the bus taking the players to the airport, they're off to Durham, New Hampshire, I think is where the University of New Hampshire's at, for a Saturday game. They're leaving Friday from the Kaufman Football Building at 9:55 a.m. They're trying to encourage people to come wish them well. And apparently, if you get there early, there's opportunity to chat with the coaches and the players before they depart. So, and then the game is on Saturday and it's And then the game is on Saturday, and it's, I think, nationally televised on ESPN-U, so we'll wish them well. And if you can, go out and send them off.
Excuse me. Mr. McCarthy?
I just want to share, I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the Heartland National Guard Readiness Center ribbon-cutting, and wow, what a great project. Landed 18 million of federal and state funding for that project here in our community, and I think the total was nearly 30 full-time jobs here, and then, obviously, the 404th were grade training here on the weekends. And the classroom space is actually getting used for classrooms for Heartland Community College, a couple of computer labs, and it's a heck of a facility. And if you haven't had a chance or haven't heard about it, go out there and get a tour. It's a great building and a great facility for a great thing. And they moved that whole operation from downtown Chicago to here, and so we're really fortunate to have that in the community. So go out and take a look if you have a chance.
Thank you. Mr. Preston?
I'm sorry, Mayor. One more thing that I had forgotten, I know he's not here this evening, but wanted to make quick mention. Mr. Kyle Hamm is the new CEO of the Economic Development Council as of today, and just wanted to make a quick personal note. I had the opportunity to work with Kyle at the State of Illinois for the last four years or so, and had a tremendous experience working with him. He's extremely professional and extremely capable in the world of economic development and community building. And I know that, I look forward to working with him again in his new role, and as this is his new day, I would certainly encourage those of you watching and listening to take a chance to get to know him, as well as those around the table.
Thank you. I'm looking, I'm looking.
Go adjournment.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mrs. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss? Aye. We're adjourned.
[inaudible]
I'm going over to Madison. I'm going to invite everybody. Say happy, happy Christmas.
The state mom is talking to you.